The City of Daly City Recreation Commission meeting, today is Tuesday, March 23. And please visit Daly City's virtual meeting website to register to attend the virtual meeting via Zoom, watch the live stream of the meeting and view the agenda at bit.ly/daylycitymar23. COVID-19 announcement regarding public meetings. Pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N2920, members of the Daly City Recreation Commission and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via live stream at bit.ly/daylycitymar23. For public participation, there are two ways to submit public comments. One, send written comments by 2:00 p.m. on meeting day, and two, register to speak at the meeting via Zoom. To submit a comment in writing, please email active@dailycity.org and write public comment in the subject line. In the body of the email include the item number and/or title of the item, as well as your comments. All comments received by 4:00 p.m. will be emailed to the Recreation Commission members and included as an add to packet on the city's website prior to the meeting. Comments received after 4:00 p.m. will be added to the record and shared with the commission members for the public meeting. Comments are not read aloud into the record. To speak at the meeting, you must register to join via Zoom. The city requests that you complete your registration by 5:00 p.m. on the meeting date. After registering, you'll receive a confirmation email containing instructions on how to join the meeting, including a unique link. Your address and email will not be disclosed to the public. Public comment is limited to two minutes maximum. To register to speak at a meeting via Zoom, visit bit.ly/recommmt. You must familiarize yourself with Zoom prior to joining the meeting. When you would like to speak on an item during the public comment portion of the meeting, you will need to use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The city will not be providing technical support. If you don't wish to speak, the city requests that you watch the live stream of the meeting on the city's virtual meeting website. Persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating in this meeting should call the office of the city clerk at 991-8078 as soon as possible. This meeting is now called to order, and we can start with the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And next up, a roll call.
Commissioner Pastor?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
And Chair Luna?
Here. Next on the agenda, approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
You have a motion to approve.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And next, approval of the minutes for February 23, 2021.
You also have a motion to approve the minutes.
A second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And next up, we have director's report.
Thank you, Chair Luna. So tonight, we have one fantastic topic, and that is our focus on finally being able to reopen the Giamona Pool again in Orange Tier. the Gmona Pool again in orange tier. Now, you remember, we did it once before, and we went one day, then we got in the deep end. So we're hoping that this keeps, we keep afloat. And Romeo Benson is going to present the topic tonight because Chris Mariano is actually at the pool this evening with his staff on the swim lessons. So, Mr. Benson, I turn it to you.
Good afternoon, I mean, good evening. So in regards to the pool on, just to give you guys a reminder, on February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, it was approved by the city council to change the fee for upper level swim lessons at Gmona Pool from sixty-six-dollar resident to eighty-one-dollar non-resident. I'm sorry, from sixty-six resident, eighty-one-dollar non-resident to eighty dollars resident and ninety-five-dollar non-resident, temporarily due to COVID-19. In late February twenty-twenty-two, two thousand twenty, the county of San Mateo was in color status of purple, which allowed swimming lessons in both indoor and outdoor pools to open with distancing and safety modification. In addition, at that time, San Mateo County had deemed swim lessons an essential activity for indoor and outdoor pools regardless of tier color. Our aquatics team had only chosen to open upper level lessons because we would be able to practice lessons safely and distance. At this time, a lot of customers are questioning rather, why are we not opening the lower level lessons? Our lower level lessons is a lot of hand-to-hand contact within less than six feet. And so to control that, we only decided to do all upper levels. So in, for all the upper level levels, each student would be designated an individual lane in the deep end, and instructors would be able to instruct the swimmer from deck. Again, a normal upper level swim lesson consists of an eight-student-to-one-swim-instructor ratio. But to maintain social distancing, we changed our level ratio to four students to one swim instructor. A typical non-COVID day, you would have between maybe fifty to one hundred swimmers and viewers in the facility during lessons, with the modifications, only a total of sixteen patrons, that being eight swimmers and eight parents would be allowed into the facility. We scheduled six staff members temporarily to instruct lifeguard check-in, clean, and service the customers. The number of staff may change once we get a bit, we get a better feel of all the new processes, such as disinfecting and welcoming our customers. So, once the fee change was approved, our team had decided to start upper level lessons on March twenty-third, which was last Tuesday, for only Tuesday and Thursday lessons from five PM to seven-thirty PM, giving us the opportunity to serve forty students a day. Once registration had opened last, I mean, two weeks ago, all upper level swim classes were full. And I know this past week, we've, some people had dropped out because they had misplaced their students in the wrong class, but immediately, those classes were full. Weekly, the aquatics team, myself, which include myself, Chris, and Derek meet to discuss issues concerned and lessons learned. And we also have meetings with our current part-time staff. The six current part-time staff, where we are trying to keep those staff consistent for the, at least the first two sessions for now, just to make sure, you know, if we have any issues, at least we have a bubble amongst our staff members. Before I continue on, do the commissioners have any questions as of right now? No, okay, all right. So, looking forward, now, I know we, when we had come up with this agenda that, for approval, this was in February when we were in purple. Now, it's one month later, and we're already in orange. Even though we're changing tier colors rapidly, at this time, we are taking it slow just for safety precautions. Things to look forward to in probably maybe even a few weeks is possible limited swim, lap swim hours, in which we actually did do in November. For some reason, November sixteen is striking a note in my head, is that correct Denise? Sorry to put you on the spot Denise, okay. I swear it was like a few weeks ago, but it was November sixteen when we had opened for one day. But because we are in orange, and because of now, all the new, the school schedules and so forth, we won't be opening up, we're not planning to open up those lap swim hours. Chris and I, along with Derek, are looking into possibly only Saturday lap swim. And also, DCD usage, I mean, DCD has been waiting patiently. I don't know if you guys remember DCD, it's been a year, the Dolphins, their membership was over a hundred prior to COVID. At this point, I'm not quite sure what the numbers they have as of right now, but they are excited and looking forward to coming back. But those are two things that we are anticipating very soon is lap swim and the return of DCD. And then hopefully, we could survey our community, how comfortable they feel, hopefully by summer, and see if we could increase the number of lessons. The only things that are really holding us back as of right now is the uncertainty for the schedule from the school district, along with our staff members. As of last year, we had over forty staff members in the aquatics area. We only, we have under twenty, and only at this time, ten of them are active. So those are the struggles we are looking at in near future.
Have a video you're gonna share?
Oh yeah, I totally forgot. So we, so we made this short video clip for posting, and just so people, I guess we wanted to make sure, since we are the only, I think we're one of the first programs that are actually happening physically, we wanted to make sure everyone felt comfortable. And so what we did was, we did, we did a quick video just to get the community informed of what's actually going on at our pool, and let me go ahead and share that quick, hold on. And it's fairly short, but there you go. Can everyone see that? I mean, it's a quick teaser. We didn't want to do a longer video. We know that if you watch the video, there are a few things I noticed, I was laughing the other day, was like, hey, you know what, we need to improve the way we're cleaning. If you guys noticed, like, the kickboards, when they're spraying it, our staff member, I had to correct him right after, was, you're doing it too close. When you guys are spraying, you're supposed to spray far, so it's not fully soaked. It's supposed to be a small mist, but those are little things we're currently working on. Even our, like, for example, the face mask, we've changed them all. All staff members now have an assigned face mask that is reusable for them, and they could actually clean it after their shift. So those are a few things that we're making corrections with. So I guess it's the day, it's, I guess, a weekly process on improving the program itself and the way things are done. And that's it, but if, do you guys have any questions?
Yo, thank you Romeo. Yeah, the video, honestly, in my opinion, I think it gets to the point, I'm glad it's short. Every, I took a couple notes from it, like, I've seen temperature checks, especially with the automated one. There's no, like, person that's kind of in that front line. You guys are cleaning, parents are social distance while they're watching their kid go through the classes. And thank you for adding about the reusable face mask. But overall, like, it gets to the point, like, if I was just a regular patron, and that's been part of the swimming community, I would feel, you know, if I was one of those folks that is ready to step into the light during this time, even during the orange tier, I feel like those, those steps that you guys are taking would make me and my family feel comfortable, so. Yeah, for sure.
Just like to add that, I agree with Nate's overview on the, on the video, it's right to the point. And I'm just impressed at how, how it's being used in terms of getting the word out to the swimming community and the Daily City resident community. And it shows that we are taking it seriously in terms of the distancing. So there's not any unnecessary folks standing around the pool like we once used to see. It's just the parent and the participant and the individual staff that's there. And so, great job, thank you for sharing that Romeo, and staff.
Yeah, thank you for sharing, I just had to, I'm just curious, like, now that we're in orange, like, are you, is the department getting more calls about the programs? I'm just curious where people's, I guess, interest level is at this time? If there's a rush, or is there, you know, or people are just slowly trickling in?
So what was funny was, we, we actually brought that up amongst the aquatics team is what we were noticing on the first day. Though these people were excited to come back into the pool, there was a lot of hesitation, like, it felt awkward, I would say, I was, I was on the side when we were doing that video, I was giggling the whole entire time. I was like, why is it so quiet at the pool? There's people swimming, there's actually people here, why is it dead silent? And it's, I think it's because people are just not used to being out there. But if we, in regards to future programming at the pool, like what Chris had done for the upper levels, he, he did a survey, he surveyed the aquatics community, especially those who are in the upper level. We plan to do the same thing. When it comes to the hand-to-hand, the lower levels, we, we are, me and Chris in particular are still hesitant. We don't feel comfortable, nor do we think our staff would feel comfortable at this time. So and that's what we're planning first, first and foremost, lap swim, DCD, in which we could fully control and make sure everyone is social distance and safety precautions are, you know, are done. But when it comes to the lower levels, it will be highly difficult unless we literally glove up the whole entire body of our instructor, you know?
No, thank you, thank you for sharing that, I was curious, so I appreciate it.
I just want to add, like, I, I co-sign everything you say Romeo, I mean, like, overall, it's, I really care about all of the staff's comfortability level. So if you need, I feel like, you know, I'm not sure if I'm in the position to, to really push this out there, but I really support you guys going at your own pace, because I just remember, like, a few months back, when we, when you guys put the effort to reopen everything, and then it just gets halted, right? Like, that always is like, kind of in the back of my mind, and just putting myself back in the shoes of being a staff, like, having all that prep and telling your staff, like, here's gonna be your hours and what's gonna look like, and everything shut down. It's, it's a terrible situation, but I definitely support if the comfortability level with DCD, since they're like a tight-knit community, they could kind of do a lot more of that, you know, being autonomous in the pool and carry that, like, responsibility within that community, and then just overseeing that and having that, whatever system that you have in place for safety. I'll support that over, you know, just having open swim again, or open lap swim, or at least, like, ease that in until staff comfortability levels, even though, like, right now, like, we're, it seems like there's only ten staff that's active, you're gonna have to build that community up again. So whatever pace is most comfortable, I totally co-sign that and support that.
Thank you.
We're really trying our best, and Romeo alluded to it, we're trying to keep, continue to build the foundation of what we're doing. You know, we have complete comfort doing the senior lunch program, we have complete comfort doing food distribution. Aquatics is now the next layer of that, and although we may not be in our facilities doing what we would normally do, and there are people that call up and say, can I have a rental, can I have a party, can I have? We're definitely not going there, but we have great support with the city manager's office. And in my bi-weekly meetings with the city manager, we both agree, go, go at a slow pace, because what happened before to us, having to get anxious and excited about doing certain things and then getting shut down, it's just, makes it easier to do more slowly, and slow and steady wins the race here. And really, every city, it seems, up and down the peninsula, is at the same pace. We all check in every couple of weeks just to see where everyone's at. And some people are doing different things that maybe our city wouldn't do, and that's okay. Whatever works for our city is what works best, so. Yeah, good job Romeo.
Thank you Romeo.
And that is all we have for the director's report.
That's it.
Okay, so next up, commissioners' report. Do we have any today?
Not so much a report, but just a question I want to put out there. When, when, what color code would we need to be in, or what comfort level would City, they need to be in to begin having our meetings in the council chambers again?
I will defer to Stephen on that one.
Okay. We, we actually, we just talked about this at our city council meeting. We're not sure yet when, when we'll be able to do that. I know that, well, we're waiting on guidance from the state and the governor. As soon as we can, we'll be back in chambers, but we're, we're just kind of waiting and seeing for now.
Okay.
It's gonna be, I think, a couple of months.
Okay.
But I really have no clue.
Okay, thank you Stephen.
Great, so moving on to announcements and communications.
That's me, and I have an announcement that Romeo was gonna do about our CPRS. We, we received another award.
Yes, sorry about that, did not know how to transition over, so I'm just gonna go ahead and read on behalf, this is from the California Parks, Park and Recreation Society. On behalf of the California Park and Recreation Society, we'd once again like to congratulate you and the City of Daily City Department of Library and Recreation Services on your recent Award of Excellence. You are now part of the 2020 Best of the Best class. The CPRS Awards Program recognizes outstanding achievement in the areas of facility, design, park planning, marketing, and communication, and community improvement and programming through demonstrating the cream principles of challenge, resourcefulness, execution, accomplishment, accomplishment, and alignment with the Parks and Recreation Mission. You should be proud that your project met the higher standards for achieving excellence. Please find enclosed a one-of-a-kind award plaque to proudly display in recognition of your marketing and communications Award of Excellence for Daily City Recreation Slice. Pretty cool, it's made out of recycled glass?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it goes on and on, but all I want to say is congratulations to the team that really worked hard on it, and that includes your hostess with the most, Isagardo Belanos, Angelo Ignacio, who also came up with the idea, and the rest of the team, Opal Fuller, David Zetzer, Brian Flowers, our videographers, Matt and Christopher Joe, and our social media person Derek Shu.
All right.
Excellent job, hopefully they're watching right now, congratulations you guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you everyone.
So with that, we're gonna, we got a few announcements of upcoming events, and I'm gonna start out with Daily Fun, and we've kind of talked about Daily Fun a little bit, it's on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. It's from three-thirty to four-thirty, and it's a virtual event for the kids. It offers amazing art, music, science, sports, exercise, cooking projects, and more. And for more information, anybody out there can contact Gina Meganini at seven-four-six-eight-three-three-one. And then you can also register online, and the link is within our system on our iPlay system. So that's the first deal. Then, unfortunately, this event is full that I'm going to talk about, but it's the Spring Fun Drive-In Movie Night. It's in partnership with the Daily City Host Lions Club and Republic It's in partnership with the Daily City Host Lions Club and Republic Services. It's gonna be held at Geller Park this Friday, March twenty-six. And the movie will start at sundown. Doesn't it sound like, ooh, so exciting? It's gonna be Karate Kid. And the Daily City Host Lions Club and Republic Services can provide each car, there are gonna be fifty cars, that are gonna be able to view this movie under the stars in Daily City. Hopefully, there actually will be stars seen, and the fog will not come out to play. They'll get a goodie basket, each of them, in their cars. They'll be able to watch it on our wonderful, amazing inflatable screen, screens? Yeah, screens. Two screens. And Egardo is gonna be one of those amazing people. After a shot, he's gonna hobble over and help set all of it up, because that's what a dedicated person he is. Amazing. Then, if that was not exciting enough, on Sunday, April fourth, which is Easter, we are having the Extreme Family Fund Race at ten to noon at various parks throughout the city. It is a free event, event for the community. And there will be, you correct me if I'm wrong, Romeo, you're, the, the families go to one park site, they get a clue from a bunny and bunny's friends, and then, what?
Stop. No, at nine AM, at nine AM on April fourth, four postings, I mean, five postings will be put up on Instagram and Facebook. And they're all hints, and our Derek Schu came up with some hints, and he made them all rhyme and everything. It's, it's hilarious. And they were to find two of the four site locations. At those site locations, there will be a friend of our springtime bunny. And at, at those locations, there will be given on, given an objective. Once completed, they will take a ticket. Once they get two tickets from two different locations, they will go to the final destination, which is also not announced, but you will find it on social media. And with the two tickets, they are able to go get a springtime basket and a visit from our springtime bunny, and I almost slipped and gave the final destination.
And they might even see Share Bear if they're lucky. Okay, I had to put that in there, because it's my new outfit. Then, oh, to register, you can go same location, active communities.com, Daily City, and get registered. So all you families out there, come on down for the Extreme Family Fund Race. We have a child and adult instructional baseball program, starting on Thursdays, April eighth through May twenty-seventh at Westlake Park. It's gonna be T-ball beginner ages five to seven years, from five-thirty to six-thirty, and then intermediate ages seven to nine from six-thirty to seven-thirty. Residents, it's a hundred and eleven dollars. And non-residents, it's a hundred and fifty. And the program is for children ages five to nine and their partner, sixteen plus. And it could be a fun and exciting program. We're trying to bring the T-ball and groups back in a very social distance, fun way, safe way. There'll be weekly clinics, clinics for both participants. Instructors will teach basic baseball principles, techniques, drills, and exercises. And all safety protocols will be in place. All participants should bring their own glove and bat. Balls, tees, and batting helmets will be provided. And then again, for more information, go to our online website. And then our last event that we have will be the Third Annual Spring Fever Showcase. I don't know, Egardo, would you like to touch, talk about it?
Sure. So last weekend, we had, actually, two weeks, two weekends ago, teens from Daily City came, they scheduled themselves, and our staff recorded them. So if you saw our last showcase in the winter, it's gonna follow the same format. They, they're showing off their talents and the opportunity for them to, to put themselves out there and to show what Daily City teens can do. So we're gonna be airing the premiere, will be on Facebook on April, on Friday, April ninth at seven PM. So check out our Facebook at Daily City Teens. And, yeah, so, and we got, we really do have some talented teens. And we keep getting new ones, so we have some returning talents, and we have new ones coming up, so I'm really excited. Our staff has been working really hard to, to up their game in the production. We actually have some of our past participants are gonna be acting as hosts. So we're really excited. I haven't seen any of it. I like to be surprised. So even though I oversee it, it's a nice treat for me to see what they got. So, April ninth.
And if anybody has any questions, they can contact teens@dailycity.org. And that ends all of our announcements. Thank you.
Great, thank you. A lot of like fun and exciting events to attend to, in person and online. At this time, are there any public comments? Okay. If there are no public comments or any other announcements, this meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting is Tuesday, April twenty-seven at seven PM. Thank you, everybody.
All right. Thank you. Stay safe, everyone.
All right. Have a good evening.
All right. Good night, all.
Bye, y'all. Bye.
Good night.
Night.